Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 24th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and one announcement, the chat feature on the Zoom call will be turned off until after the agenda has been completed for comments from the audience. At this time, please join me for a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. At this time, we have a couple of proclamations, and City Administrator Julia Glance and Acting Mayor will present the proclamations. Ms. Glance?
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to present this first proclamation. It is the first hundred-year proclamation that I am giving, and I know that our other mayor soon to be returning has only done a few of these in his tenure. Mayor Tillman, I'm not sure how many you have done when you were mayor, but it's certainly an honor to read this for a dear community member, Mr. John Brohail. So John Brohail turned 100 years young on May 3rd, 2021, and it is appropriate to acknowledge this milestone birthday because although he now resides in Florida near his daughter Susan, there was a time when, for many years, he was a great voice in the Salisbury community. And whereas Mr. Brohail managed the J.C. Penny Store when it was located on East Main Street in downtown Salisbury prior to its relocation in 1990 to the Center Salisbury Shopping Mall, North Salisbury Boulevard, which meant he was an active businessman in this community. And whereas Mr. Brohail held positions of responsibility in several municipal civic and economic development organizations and committees, including the Salisbury Y Comico Planning and Zoning Commission, Urban Renewal Committee, United Way Salvation Army, Parsons Foundation, and the Chamber of Commerce, which meant he was an active leader and advocate in the community. And whereas during Mr. Brohail's tenure on the Salisbury Y Comico Planning and Zoning Committee, he served in 1996 on the committee to develop the first comprehensive plan for planning and zoning in Salisbury and Y Comico County. And while serving on the Urban Renewal Committee, he developed a plan to acquire properties for parking for the downtown area. And whereas Mr. Brohail served as a trustee of the Parsons Foundation and also as a board member, Board Director of the United Way for 15 years while he had the opportunity to work with fellow businessman Jack Purnell to change the United Way solicitation from door-to-door to payroll payment system, which was huge because a professional was hired to manage the campaign, which raised $100,000 for the first time. And whereas Mr. Brohail was serving as property committee chairman when the Salvation Army thrift store was designed and constructed on Vine Street in Salisbury and had the honor of being named a life member of the Salvation Army Advisory Board in 1999 in December, the only life member that the Salvation Army captain can recall still today. And whereas Mr. Brohail served for 15 years on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and during that time received the Chamber's Community Service Award in 1983, and also appointed the committee to develop the Fred Atkins Memorial in honor of the Chamber's first president and the Chamber of Commerce's upcoming 50th anniversary. And whereas Mr. Brohail previously noted that the Atkins Memorial initially installed on the downtown plaza was inscribed, "Inspired by the achievements of the past and dedicated to the faith in the future", which is truly fitting as the sculpture was moved in 2020 to the new traffic circle at the convergence of Mill, Carroll, Camden, and Riverside Drive. And whereas a former city of Salisbury mayor Barry Tillman, who served from 1998 to 2009, enjoys a familiar connection with John, she acknowledged she was the recipient of his mentorship during her time in office. Quote, "Just one is in a long line of mentees," excuse me, "and remembers him as a force of positive change in Salisbury and a man whom others look to for leadership and guidance." Therefore, I, Julia Glance, on behalf of Mayor Jake Day, Mayor of City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim today, May 24th, 2021, as John Brohail Day in Salisbury. And I know Mayor Tillman stewarded this project and would like to say a few words on behalf of the family.
Thank you, Julia. And first of all, welcome home, Mayor Day. I am so happy that you are back at 125 North Division Street in your office. And I just want to tell you how happy I am with the wonderful traffic circle at Mill, Carroll, Riverside, and Camden, because it is great, and I have great memories of the first day that Donnie Drew, who was head of the District Engineer for State Highway, and Gene Kofelt took John Pick, then city administrator, down there and suggested that idea, and I'm telling you, it is great. It is just great. I find reasons to go to places in Salisbury now through Riverside Drive, so thank you, thank you, thank you, and welcome home. I just want to thank you so much for this recognition and honor for John Brohail. He will be incredibly honored to receive this recognition from the city because I don't think he ever thought anything he did was extraordinary, but it was. He honored the city he loved by working tirelessly to make it better, kinder, and more fair. I am always honored to call him a friend. We have known each other for many years. He mentored me when I first came into the mayor's office and made sure that his causes, the Salvation Army and many others, were important to me and to the city. And I know that his family will treasure your honor that you have given him and the recognition that you have given him for generations to come. He has grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and we cannot begin to thank you enough for what you have done. Thank you so much, Salisbury, for being the city that you are.
Thank you, Mayor Tillman. Appreciate that. And if I could, Julia, before you go to the next proclamation, I had the privilege of serving as Rotarian with John for years, and what a gentleman, what a professional, what a source of inspiration for a lot of people, and it couldn't be given to a nicer guy. And I hope we're here for his 105th and 110th.
Thank you, Jack. That's a great honor.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Tillman. Ms. Glance, you have another proclamation?
I do. Mayor Day, did you want to add something?
I apologize. I was speaking out of turn, but I just wanted to thank you to Mayor Tillman. That's all.
All right. Well, our second proclamation for this evening is for Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month has been observed annually in May since 2006, when President George W. Bush proclaimed a month that would recognize the more than 350-year history of Jewish contributions to America and the American culture. Whereas since 1654, when the first Jewish settlers arrived in New Amsterdam, present-day New York City, in search of freedom to practice their faith, Jewish Americans have contributed in countless ways to nearly every facet of our country's society, culture, and character through contributions to science, medicine, sports, business, civil rights, government, and military service. And whereas the National Museum of American Jewish History in Philadelphia has been leading this year's nationwide month-long celebration by featuring a series of events that recognize that indelible contributions Jewish Americans have made continue to make to our nation's history. And whereas Jewish women and men and children have throughout history faced anti-Semitic discrimination, persecution, and violence, and sadly continue to face the same today, yet they continue to demonstrate the unbreakable spirit that has helped them overcome cruel oppression, suffering, violence, and bigotry that have no place in our hearts or in our community. And whereas Jewish Americans strengthen, sustain, and inspire our country through dedication of family, respect for cherished traditions, and commitment to the values of justice and equality that unite Americans in every faith and background. Now, therefore, I, Julia Glance, on behalf of Mayor Jake Day, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Julia. Appreciate it very much. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move, April.
Second, Angela.
Thank you, ladies. Motion made by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Blake. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, Michelle.
Motion made by Mr. Boda, seconded by Mrs. Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols. You're on mute.
Got it. Thank you. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 19th, 2021 Special Meeting Minutes, April 19th, Work Session Minutes, April 26th, Legislative Session Minutes, May 3rd, Special Meeting Minutes and Work Session Minutes, and May 10th Legislative Session Minutes. Resolution Number 3107, approving the reappointment of Joseph Anderson to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending July 2024, and that's it.
Thank you very much. I'll call the motion now. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake? You're muted, Angela.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move, April.
Second, Angela.
Motion made by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Blake. Good evening, Mrs. Miller. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you. We have three separate requests this evening, four requests for declaration of surplus. The first is from the Department of Field Operations. It's six different vehicles. All the vehicles will go to the onsite auction. I believe that's tentatively planned for the service center complex sometime around June 26th, that option. We have a second request for surplus. There's an outbuilding at the Salisbury Zoo. The building is rotted, really needs to be demolished. It can't be reused safely. And lastly, for the Salisbury Police Department, as a retirement gift, giving the duty weapon to a person that's recently retired.
Thank you. Mr. Boda, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I'll then call the motion. All those in favor to approve the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2664 for the second reading.
So moved.
So moved.
Second, April.
Motion made by Mr. Boda, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2664. With the council's attention, amendments have been made to this ordinance since its adoption, excuse me, its passage on first reader, and I will identify those amendments while reading this ordinance into the record for a vote on second reading. Ordinance number 2664, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment, the FY 2021 General Fund, to appropriate funds for the purchase of the Endergov software application. Whereas the City of Salisbury has determined the city requires the Endergov software application to better run its local government operations and track activity on commercial and residential property. Whereas the Endergov software will improve the city's ability to issue code violations and citations, manage building permits and other municipal permits, complete building indoor fire inspections for properties located within the city. Whereas the Endergov software will also significantly improve the city's ability to complete reporting and analysis for ongoing municipal activity, and will enable various city departments to communicate more effectively with one another across the central software platform. Whereas the city estimates the total cost of the Endergov software application package to be The words "and" estimates the total cost to city departments and the general fund to be $174,000 are deleted as shown on line 16. Whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the city's purchase of the Endergov software application package for the reasons set forth here and above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2021 General Fund Budget B and is hereby amended as follows. Increase Housing and Community Development Department Account Number 25200-5770365. The number 45,000 is struck and inserted and replaced thereof is the number $54,616. Decrease Infrastructure and Development Department Account Number 31000-5770365. The number $45,000 is deleted, and in replace thereof is inserted $35,384. Decrease Business Development Account Number 11600-534308-200 by 10,000. An account number 11600-555512 by $6,232 is inserted lines 28 and 29 as shown on ordinance number 2664. Subsection D, decrease City Council Account Number 11000-555503 by 3,000 is inserted in line 31 as shown on ordinance number 2664. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. It is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is furthered the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into the section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Just, you know, I'm still in support of this. I think this is going to increase the efficiency across the board. It's going to allow inspectors to know what each other is doing. So we're going to know what the right hand's doing and what the left hand's doing. And I think this is also going to benefit our constituents and other partners on the other side who have to purchase licenses and permits that they'll ultimately be able to efficiently do that on their end, and it's going to be more efficient on our end in processing everything. So I think this is a, for me personally, I think this is a big step forward for the city, and so I am in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Comments or questions, Ms. Jackson?
As Meredith says, just accountability for all the departments and processing all the information. So I have no other questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
I don't know if this is the right time to do this, but I think we need a motion to amend as read by Mr. Michael Sullivan.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we are going to get that motion.
Okay, I'm just making sure. No comments or questions?
Okay. Mrs. Gregory?
No comments or questions?
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the ordinance number 2664 for the second reading as amended.
Excuse me. We just need that motion and second.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 2664 as read by City Attorney Michael Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Is there a second?
Second, Michelle.
Gregory, seconded. First, we will vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote to amend is five to zero. We'll now call the main motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2664 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Ordinance number 2664 for the second reading is passed by a vote of four to one. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2666 for the second reading.
So move, April.
Ms. Jackson?
Second, Angela.
Second, by Ms. Blake? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2666. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 8.11 of the Salisbury City Code entitled the Fire Prevention Code for the purpose of adding new permits that are required to be obtained from the City of Salisbury Fire Marshal's Office. Whereas the ongoing application administration and enforcement of the Salisbury City Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. Whereas the City of Salisbury has adopted the State Fire Prevention Code subject to local amendments. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to amend Chapter 8.11.020 of the Salisbury City Code for the purpose of establishing additional specific permits that are required to be obtained from the City Fire Marshal's Office. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Chapter 8.11 of the Salisbury City Code entitled the Fire Prevention Code be and is hereby amended by repealing the crossed-out language and adding the bolded and underlined language as follows. Section 8.11.020 E6 entitled "Permits from the Fire Marshal are required for the following." Subsection N is added to provide, reform any fire hydrant or fire pump water flow test. And subsection O is added to provide to sell consumer fireworks. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. It is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is furthered the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 4. In section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
I have none either. I will call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2666 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2666 for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2667 for the second reading.
So moved. Angela?
Second, April.
Blake made the motion. Ms. Jackson seconded. Mr. Sullivan?
With council's attention, amendments have been made to ordinance number 2667 since its passage on first reader. I will identify those amendments while reading the ordinance into the record for a vote on second reading. Ordinance number 2667, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 15.26 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Rental of Residential Premises by adding a new section 15.26.045 entitled Fair Chance Housing. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury desire to update the Salisbury City Code to adopt a fair chance housing policy to reduce the barriers to housing for individuals with a criminal history. Whereas mass incarceration is a national and local crisis, and restoring the rights of people affected by mass incarceration is a national priority. Whereas the U.S. Department of Justice has estimated one in every three adults in the United States is either in arrest or conviction record. Whereas homelessness is a critical issue in the City of Salisbury, formerly incarcerated people are disproportionately affected by homelessness, which can prevent a formerly incarcerated person from getting a job, from visiting with their children, and from fulfilling other needs that are fundamental to reintegrating with the community after incarceration. Whereas many landlord and landlord's agents require a criminal background check as part of the application process for rental housing, and the information obtained from that criminal background check may be used to deny housing to otherwise qualified applicants. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has recognized the discriminatory impact that criminal background checks can have on homelessness in minority communities across the United States, and the words "have imposed" on line 24 are struck and in replace thereof accordingly, HUD has promulgated guidelines addressing the use of criminal background checks during the applicant screening process. Whereas notwithstanding the aforementioned HUD guidelines, reliance on criminal background checks by landlords and the words "and landlord's agents" are added on line 27, creates additional barriers for previously incarcerated individuals and their families to access affordable housing. Whereas for those persons with limited income and time constraints, the lack of transparency during the applicant screening process creates further difficulties and costs that could be avoided. Whereas the Council of the City of Salisbury has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to increase transparency by landlords and landlord's agents to allow applicants to better understand the necessary qualifications considered to lease or rent a residential dwelling unit, and accordingly to amend the Salisbury City Code to require landlords and landlord's agents to provide a transparency disclosure in the words regarding the use of a background check report as defined herein are added to lines 34 and 35 for rental applicants. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Chapter 15.26 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Rental of Residential Premises be and is hereby amended by adding the bolded and underlined language as follows. Chapter 15.26.045, Fair Chance Housing Policy. Definitions. In addition to those definitions set forth in Chapter 15.26.030, the following words have the following meaning. Agent means a person authorized to make, contract, or authorize a lease or to charge rent for a dwelling unit on behalf of a landlord. Applicant means a person who seeks information about, visits, or Applicant means a person who seeks information about, visits, or applies to rent or lease a dwelling unit or seeks to be added as a household member to an existing lease for a dwelling unit. Arrest means a record for any jurisdiction that does not result in a conviction that includes information indicating that a person has been questioned, apprehended, taken into custody or detained, or held for investigation by law enforcement, police, or prosecutorial agency, and/or charged with indicted or tried and acquitted for any felony, misdemeanor, or other criminal offense. Background check report means any report regarding an applicant's criminal history, including but not limited to those produced by the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Maryland State Police, other law enforcement agencies, courts, or any consumer reporting or tenant screening agency. Conviction means a record from any jurisdiction that includes information indicating that a person has been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor or other criminal offense and for which the person was placed on probation, fined, imprisoned, and/or parole. Criminal history means information transmitted orally or in writing by any other means obtained from any source, including but not limited to the person to whom the information pertains, the government agency, or a background check report regarding one or more convictions or arrests. A conviction that has been sealed, dismissed, vacated, expunged, voided, invalidated, or otherwise rendered inoperative by judicial action or by statute, in determination or ju- or adjudication in the juvenile justice system, a matter considered in or processed through the juvenile justice system, or participation in or completion of a diversion or a deferral of judgment program. Landlord means the owner of a dwelling unit. Lease means any agreement written or verbal that establish, excuse me, that establishes or modifies the terms, conditions, rules, regulations, or any other provisions concerning the use and occupancy of a dwelling. Owner means any person having a legal or equitable interest in the dwelling unit, including but not limited to a mortgagee and an assignee of rents. Any person who alone or jointly or separately with others shall have the charge, care, or control of any structure as executor, administrator, trustee, or guardian of the estate of the owner. Or any person whose name appears on the property tax bill and added to the line seventy, to line seventy-four for a dwelling. Rent means the amount charged for the right to possession and use of a dwelling. Requirements for a landlord and a landlord's agent. The word "a" on line seventy-eight has been struck and inserted and replaced thereof are the words before "a." Landlord and the word "and" has been struck and inserted and replaced thereof the word "or" on line seventy-eight. A landlord's agent. In the words, may charge an applicant a fee to apply to lease or rent a dwelling unit. The landlord or the landlord's agent have been added to line seventy-eight and seventy-nine. Shall disclose to, and the word "and" has been deleted and replaced, uh, excuse me, and put in replace thereof is the word "the" on line seventy-nine, applicant. The charge or cost of the application for lease or rent of a dwelling unit, the words "of a dwelling unit" are added to line eighty. If a background check report will be conducted, and if so, how the word "there" has been deleted from line eighty-one and inserted and replaced thereof the word "for." Back, the background check report can extend, referred to as the look back period. Word "and" has been inserted into line eighty-two. The word "and" has been struck from eighty-two after the abbreviation for subsection C, any exclusionary criteria used to screen an applicant. The following words have been deleted from lines eighty-three and eighty-four of the ordinance before the landlord or the landlord's agent may charge an applicant a fee to apply to lease or rent. Subsection two, a landlord and a landlord's agent shall, and the word "also" has been deleted from line eighty-five and inserted and replaced thereof is a colon with the abbreviation for subsection A. Disclose and the words on all promotional materials and advertisements related to renting or leasing a dwelling unit there have been deleted from lines eighty-five and eighty-six. The words "the landlords" or "landlord's agents" have been inserted lines eighty-six and eighty-seven. Policies and practices related to a background check report, words "and," "shall" have been deleted from line eighty-seven and then replaced thereof the words "on their websites" within their application materials and at their rental or leasing offices. And the abbreviation for subsection B have been added to lines eighty-seven and eighty-eight. Provide notice of the requirements set forth in, the word subsection has been inserted into line eighty-nine above. And the words "in there" have been deleted from lines, from line eighty-nine and inserted and replaced thereof the words "within the landlord's" or "landlord's agents" have been inserted into line eighty-nine and ninety. Application materials on there, the word "websites" has been deleted, the word "website" per n, s, per n have been inserted to line ninety and at the words "any rental" have been deleted from line ninety and in place thereof the words "their rental" have been inserted into line ninety. Or the words "leasing offices" have been deleted from line ninety, ninety-one. And in place thereof the word "leasing offices." Subsection three, it's a landlord and the word "and" has been deleted and replaced thereof the word "or" has been inserted into line ninety-two. A landlord's agent orders a background check report for an applicant. The word "they" has been deleted from line ninety-three and replaced thereof such landlord or landlord's agent have been inserted into line ninety-three, shall provide a copy of. Words that report have been deleted from line ninety-three and inserted and replaced thereof the words "the background check report" to the applicant. No conflict with state or federal law. This chapter is not intended to conflict with state or federal law. If there is a conflict between the provisions of federal or state law in this chapter, federal or state law shall control. Effective date, the provisions of this chapter shall take effect upon thirty days after final adoption of this ordinance. The city shall cause notice of this ordinance to be mailed to all landlords subject to chapter fifteen point two, six within ninety days of final adoption of this ordinance. Enforcement, failure of the landlord or landlord agent to comply with chapter fifteen point two, six point zero, four, five, B shall result in the issuance of a municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars per violation. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that these provisions of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section three, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law. Such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision so judged. And all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain, shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section four. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect, words "from" and have been deleted. The words "thirty days" have been inserted and replaced thereof on line one, twenty-four after the date of its final passage. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you for your patience, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend ordinance number two, six, six, seven as per Mr. Sullivan's reading. Do I have a?
I like, I will. I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number two, six, six, seven as read by City Attorney Michael Sullivan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Blake seconded Ms. Jackson's motion. Any questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
As well. Hearing none, I'll call the motion on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to motion to ordinance number two, six, six, seven, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I'll now call the main motion. Ordinance number two, six, six, seven as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, seven is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, eight for the first reading.
So moved, Jackson.
Jackson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Angela.
Ms. Blake makes the second. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Ms. President. Ordinance number two, six, six, eight, in ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. And to prove a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-nineteen expenses. Whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States declared that the ongoing coronavirus disease, two thousand nineteen pandemic was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to section five oh one B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Whereas in accordance with section five oh two of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to the COVID-nineteen emergency at the direction or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Program. Whereas the city of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Whereas the city submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID-nineteen crisis. Whereas FEMA funding assistance was initially provided to the city at a seventy-five percent federal cost share rate, resulting in the city receiving a reimbursement payment of a hundred and nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Whereas FEMA has now elected to provide additional funding assistance to the city to cover the remaining twenty-five percent of the costs that were incurred. Whereas the remaining twenty-five percent of the costs that were incurred by the city were previously covered by a grant from the Wycomico County Health Department, which they awarded to the city from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, funds that were received for COVID-nineteen-related expenses. Whereas the city expects to receive reimbursement from FEMA in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents for the remaining twenty-five percent of COVID-nineteen-related expenses as reflected in the exhibits attached here too, incorporated herein as if fully set forth in this ordinance. Whereas the city will be required to forward the total amount of those funds to the Wycomico County Health Department to reimburse them for the CARES Act grant funds previously awarded. Whereas section seven dash two, nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the city of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increased DHS FEMA revenue account number one, zero, five, zero, zero, dash, four, two, five, one, two, zero, dash, one, eight, zero, zero, six, by thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Increased SFD medical expense account number one, zero, five, zero, zero, dash, five, four, six, zero, one, six, dash, one, eight, zero, zero, six, by thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section three is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury, the provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury. If any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law. Such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision so judged. And all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section five. And section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, eight for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Uh, I will now open the floor for public comments. Anybody that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, uh, I will open the floor now for, um, administrative, administration comments. Acting Mayor Glenns, why don't you go first?
Uh, well, it was, I'll just start by saying it was wonderful to have another Outdoor Third Friday this past Friday. Uh, good to see everybody. Uh, we also had two really terrific events this weekend uh, with the lynching memorial task force that, um, was, was really well done. And I know I learned things that I didn't, I didn't know and, um, you know, knowing that, that I knew about a fair amount of it, just how much the general public still has to learn about our history. Um, so hopefully, uh, they will take the time to, to read about it and then see it when they're downtown. Um, and then yesterday, I know there was a number of council members, uh, that were in attendance for the Asian Development Center Festival, um, which I couldn't stay long for, but it looked like a great turnout, so. Um, it's just really exciting that, uh, things are picking up and, uh, our, heart of our community is being used for such a dynamic, a dynamic space. So other than that, um, I don't think I have anything to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Thanks, Ms. President. Um, just want to say, uh, great to see so many council members and, uh, and, and staff members out, as, as Ms. Glenn said this weekend. Also just want to say, um, how nice it was to, uh, come on tonight and see, uh, former Mayor Tillman on. That was a nice surprise that I wasn't aware, I wasn't expecting. And she, uh, she served three terms as mayor, um, one of the two longest-serving mayors, uh, we've ever had. So appreciate her service to our city. Um, and then I also just want to say, uh, today was my, uh, first staff meeting. Um, returning, uh, to, to that part of the work schedule, so. Uh, it's, it's good to be back. It's just good to get back, uh, in the swing of things and just want to say how much I appreciate everybody for, uh, uh, the work you've done. Not, not just that you continue to do, but the work that you did with, um, during one of the most difficult periods of our, our city's history or our country's history. So thank you all. Appreciate you and, uh, have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Boda, comments? We're going to do order.
Uh, I am calling in from slower, lower Delaware. So I had to take the long way home so I wouldn't have bad reception service. Uh, but, uh, just, uh, yeah, I couldn't get out this weekend. We've been working inventories for Walmart all over the eastern shore, so fun times. fun times. But certainly the next ones and some of the next events you'll be seeing my face again without a mask because I'm fully vaccinated. So just everybody should still get vaccinated to protect yourself and protect your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
I have some questions and some remarks. Last week at a work session, I spoke about some inspection. And I asked the question, how often are are these developments inspected? Which which I'm actually speaking about Mitchell Landing at this point, and then how often are houses, apartments, or other structures inspected? And when was the very last time Mitchell Landing had been inspected? And I never got a response. Those are very serious concerns to me. And I do deserve a response. I think the entire city deserves a response. And nobody has responded to either of those questions that I've asked. And I need answers. I want answers, and I think we all should have answers to these questions. It's kind of pertinent to me that I know this. I've been asked several questions by my constituents in reference to this incident. Matter of fact, I've been questioned so much, I'm just like exhausted, but I have to, you know, give them the answers that I have. I can't answer anything that I don't know because I'm not given that information. That's why I need that information. I don't know how important it is to you all, but it is important to me. I'd also, I saw, I picture, the city council's picture, and Mission's barbecue. Nice picture of us. But it was a picture of, and I don't know how they got that picture, but I I would like to have us an updated picture because I don't think our council members, the newer ones, I don't think we've ever gotten a council picture taken, have we?
I can't remember.
I don't think we did. I don't think so. I don't think so. So that's the picture that I would like to see because Mission Barbecue came in during the tenure of the newest, the council that we have now. I would like to see that picture put up there. Even though it was a nice picture of us, it was a very nice picture of us up there. And matter of fact, I didn't see it. Somebody else showed it to me. But those are some of the things that I would like to see done, and these are some of the questions that I would like to have answers to. And let me see if I had anything else written down here. No, I didn't. Just stay COVID safe. Remember to wear your mask if you have to. Get your vaccination. And then that was prevent a lot of it. Everybody have a great evening and God bless you.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake? Are you still, oh, yeah, you're there. I see.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here on the beach. See the waves? It was a lovely weekend. We had a lot of great events. I will say that the Lynch Memorial Task Force was very, very moving. I don't think I've been to a presentation as well done or as moving or important in a very long time. So as always, if you're healthy enough, please get out and donate blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
Well, not to beat a dead horse, but the 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 events this weekend were amazing. I want to give a special shout out to James Yamakawa and Amber Green for for working so hard on on the memorial task force. And I just want to say if you are, have not gotten vaccinated yet, apparently Evo is having an event this Friday. You get a vaccine and a free beer. So look it up on on Facebook. I just saw it on Facebook. So check it out. And I just want to say happy anniversary to my husband. It's been twenty-four years you've been putting up with me. So I appreciate you. I appreciate you very much and I love you and I don't know how you deal with me.
I didn't say that. You did. Okay.
You would too.
Thank you, Michelle. Just a note, there is no meeting next week. And I wish everyone a very, very safe and wonderful Memorial Day. And I was at all three events this weekend as well as walking down through the town in the evening. And we're alive and well. That's the best way of putting it, and it's great to see everybody out there. The crowd on Third Friday was amazing. Amazing. And again, I'm always echoing Angela regarding to blood. We are still in a critical state in terms of blood. If you can give blood, please do so. Have a wonderful week. And be careful, everybody, this you know, usually around Memorial Day or these big holidays, we have to be more vigilant, not just for ourselves, but for the people around us. So thank you and have a good evening. We are adjourned.